........................................................................ All right, the first order of business is we're going to open the nominations for the election of the school board president. So I would entertain any nominations.
I nominate Syndra.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's God. Are there any additional nominations? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the nomination. So moved. Scott, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike? Would you call a roll?
Syndra Keeler.
Upstaying.
Tom Lingby.
Yes.
Deb Upstang.
Yes.
Mike Stockton.
Yes.
Scott Benedict.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the nomination. For the school board vice president. Would entertain any motion?
I would like to nominate Deb for vice president.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Scott? Are there any additional nominations? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations. Mike, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Scott?
Upstang.
Would you call a roll, Rob?
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Upstaying.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you would like to stand, Syndra and Deb will administer the oath of office for president and vice president of Bryan City School District Board of Education for 2019. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president and vice president of the Board of Education of the Bryan City School District Board of Education here in Williams County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance into this office and until your successor is elected and qualified.
I will. I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Deb, congratulations.
There you go.
Congratulations. Thanks, Tom.
No problem.
Okay, we will continue on then with our organizational meeting, but first I'd like to say thank you to everyone. Look forward to 2019. We'll go on with the recommendations, the board authorizations. Would you like to review those for us, Diana? Or would you like me to?
I certainly can. So first, we need to establish the 2019 regular meeting schedule. Typically, that has been in the past the third Monday of every month with a few exceptions. One exception that I need to request is July. I apologize, but I will be out of town. And the second is consideration for February as the third Monday is President's Day, and that is a holiday and school buildings are closed on that date. So those would be the only two that I'm aware of unless you are aware of any others, Rob?
Nothing further, no. Do you have optional dates to recommend?
In looking at the calendar, if we look at February, we could certainly go a week earlier at February 11th. And then July, we can go either, I don't think we, let me look at that one real quick.
So it'll be the 8th or the 22nd?
Correct. So either one of those will work.
What does that do?
I can work to either way.
Both of those months, you're saying? Okay. Do we have any?
Later in the month better? Would that make any difference to do anything?
Well, we address February, it's February 11th, moving it up one week?
That's fine.
That'll work. That'll work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Okay. And then moving on to July, just to get that on the books so we know ahead of time.
Do you, maybe go the 22nd, just to give you a little bit more time with the July 4th holiday and?
Closing of the fiscal year.
And closing of the fiscal year, doesn't that?
That would be a little helpful. That's fine. Okay, 22nd? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then it'll be the third, continue to be the third month, third Monday?
If that, if the board so chooses. Is that okay with?
Everybody else, third?
Continue on?
Yep.
That's good.
Okay. So board committee assignments. We need to recognize or recommend the following committee assignments. Do you have those?
I do have those.
Syndra?
And I did have a conversation with fellow board members for negotiations. Tom and Deb. Business advisory, myself and Mike. The facilities OFCC committee, Tom and Mike. Legislative liaison and policy, Scott. Wellness, Deb. Our OSBA delegate, Deb as well. And for audit, Tom and Scott. Is that still acceptable with everyone who changes?
Do we still appoint a board member to the community advocates?
Oh, that's not, yes, that's Deb.
I was wondering about that.
Yes.
I would continue in that role.
Thanks.
We had that discussion, and I missed that on here.
Okay. Thank you. Under bond, position bond purchase, recommend that the board approve a $20,000 position bond for both the board president and the superintendent, and a service fund established in the amount of $20,000 for 2019 to cover school board expenses.
Are there any questions from Mrs. Savage? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve those recommendations.
Is a move?
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Sorry.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
That's okay. First one.
Tom, Mike.
2019 standing authorizations. I recommend that the board approve the superintendent as purchasing agent for Bryan City Schools, thus dispensing with the board's requirement to authorize and approve all purchases and payments in accordance with Ohio Revised Code. Superintendent, the authority to employ personnel on a temporary basis. Superintendent, the authority to dispose of obsolete equipment and materials. The CFO, the authority to request and invest tax money as it becomes available through the county auditor. Authorization for the CFO to make appropriation modifications throughout the year as is necessary. The CFO, the authority to pay all bills in a timely manner. Superintendent, the CFO, and the administrative assistant to the superintendent as Board of Education representatives for mandatory public records training required by House Fund I.
These are something we do every year. I don't know that there'd be any questions, but if so, if not, I will take a motion to accept the standing authorizations for 2019.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll?
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right into our regular meeting for January. Call to order. We'll dispense with the pledge. Okay? Flag. Roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right into our regular meeting for January. Call to order. We'll dispense with the pledge. Okay? Flag. Roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any public participation this evening, so we'll move right into the four-county report. Right here. The month of January, you will see many career technical students organizations that are having their local contest. The Business Professionals of America will be having their regional competition, January 22nd. So look forward to hearing about some of our students that participate in some of these different competitions. I also wanted to remind parents of seniors that go to four-county. There's a link on the four-county website that you can browse the site, and you'll find information about scholarships and college information important to four-county seniors, the plan to attend. And if your student hasn't come home and talked about that, something you might want to look up. Maybe there's something out there that they could apply for that would be nice. I don't know, also, if you saw the announcement in the Bryan Times, but Congressman Bob Latta visited a four-county career center, and he visited the robotics lab where he commissioned for his office in Washington, DC, the military branch's coat of arms to be hung in his office. That was pretty exciting. It was a very nice article in the paper about it, but they had the class members digitally design and cut out all the military plaques. So I want to congratulate the students in that program, as well as all the students that are doing great things out of four-county. And one last thing, February is Career and Technical Education Month, and since that will start before our next meeting on the 11th, please stay tuned to our local radio stations and papers for all the great things that are going on at four-county. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move on then to the treasuries report.
Okay, thank you. We'll review the financial reports for the month ended December 31, 2018. Our cash reconciliation report at Farmers and Merchants Bank, a balance of $1,851,458. Total checks and outstanding checks and adjustments, $76,933. Deposits at Star Ohio, $912,246. At UBS Financial, $4,276,834. At State Bank, $6,289,271. And at Star Ohio Plus, $2,433,837. Petty cash and change funds total, $7,400. Total funds on hand at the end of December, $15,694,113. Of those balances, our general fund balance was $12,716,274. Our bond retirement fund was $550,336. Our permanent improvement fund, $1,366,143. And our project maintenance fund, $412,443. Makes up most of our large funds. Once again, our total balance at the end of the month, $15,694,113. Our SM2 report, our revenues are about $187,000 ahead of budget at this point in time. Our expenses are about $49,000 under budget, so we have a positive variance of about $236,458 at the end of December. Are there any questions regarding those financial reports? If not, we'll move on to the amended appropriations. Our appropriation total at the end of December was $27,602,531. During the month of December, we had a net reduction of appropriations of about $126,212. Any questions regarding appropriations? If not, our next exhibit, we ask the board's authorization to purchase two new 78-passenger buses from Rush Truck Center. This is through the state purchasing bidding. Those two buses are in our normal PI projections for the upcoming year. They will be a fiscal year '20 purchase. They will not be in until after July, but in order to make the purchase happen before the next school year, we need to take care of the paperwork and get the buses on order at this point in time. So if there's no questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. I will accept a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations and report if there's no further questions from Mr. Osborn.
So moved.
Thanks, Deb.
Second.
Second, Mike? Thank you.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any old business.
Not old business, no.
Okay. But it looks like we're moving on to new business.
We do have a little bit of new business.
Okay.
So tonight, I want to take a few minutes to talk about the school calendar and to answer questions that the board may have. So as you know, we need to discuss the school calendar, and I want to bring you up to speed on the process so far. And then we need to give a time lapse for community to provide feedback to you before we make any final decisions. So we're going to start with just saying that tonight is not a night we're going to actually vote on the calendar, but we are going to discuss where we are in deciding that process. So at the beginning of the school year, we put together a committee full of teachers, classified staff, to get input into the calendar for school year 1920. We talked about problems that we were trying to address. One of the biggest problems that came up, just as most recently as last year, was the discussion on calamity days. So at the end of last year, we utilized calamity time beyond our first five. So in other words, right now, we have MOUs with both of the unions that the first five days are officially snow days. Students don't report, staff does not report. But because we missed beyond that last year, we made up some days. And for the first time really that I can remember, there was a big public outcry from community members, parents, about, you know, why are we making up this time at the end of the year? And we ended up, in consideration of those facts, actually dismissing the students a day early, but keeping the staff so that we could do some safety training, which was very, very beneficial to our staff. So that was one of the first things we discussed as a committee, is how can we look at calamity days? How can we look at them a little differently? How can we resolve that problem? And what we came up with is we actually stole the idea from a district across the border in Indiana, was taking a look at could we make up calamity time when it really is relevant? So if you miss a fog day in the first quarter, is there a way to make up that time in the first quarter? If you miss snow days in the second or third quarter, is there time to make those days up? So one of the calendars that we proposed was a traditional calendar, which follows much of what we're doing this year. But there was a new concept that was introduced to the staff, more of a balanced calendar. And the balanced calendar is where we introduced the idea of moving the calamity days up into the quarters that they missed. So we did our best to educate staff and to answer questions. We put out a survey to staff with those two calendars distributed. Right now, the results of that survey, a third of our staff was very much in favor of giving the new idea a try, but two-thirds of our staff voted to keep, at least just for one more year, a more traditional calendar with the calamity time at the end. I've spoken with both union leadership, and we both know that the current agreement, the current MOUs that we have in place expire at the end, they expire in July of 2020. So we have to continue to look at this. We have to continue to work on this. We have to continue to talk about it, and that's what we're committed to doing. So the committee would like me to share with the board that they are recommending, for your consideration, a more traditional calendar, which is what we have now. Starting in mid-August, let me pull up the date, starting for students on August 14th and ending for students the Friday before Memorial Day on May 22nd. Now, this calendar does accomplish one of our other goals, and that is to get the most education we can prior to state testing, which typically happens anywhere from the end of March to the first week of May. So that is our other goal. So what I will do is share both calendars with you so that you can take a look at them and answer questions that you may have, or questions that the community may bring to us. And then in February, there will be an agenda item on for you to approve a calendar for the 1920 school year. And finally, on one note, and then I'll answer any questions that you have, one thing we also talked about to be helpful to families is to maybe look at approving calendars more than just one year at a time. Maybe we could get into a cycle where we approve two calendars at a time, or three calendars at a time, just so that families could prepare and have time to look ahead, know what the schedule is, and then we could go from there. So just again, just a thought and some discussion items. So questions that you have related to calendar?
Was there any difference financially for us between the two calendars?
So each calendar had 180 student days minus the time you're allowed for student conferences and some teacher in-service. The balanced calendar does give us the opportunity to offer some additional programming. So we could move some of our high school step ahead, which is like a credit recovery program, into, earlier into the school year, so that students could stay on track. We could offer some additional tutoring, which right now, we do a little bit in the summer, in those times of break. We could offer some acceleration programs, not just remediation. That could possibly add cost, but again, you're providing more services. It may not, because we're already running those programs now, we're just doing it outside of that 180 days.
So that might just be shifting.
It might just be shifting.
Perhaps.
Okay. Thank you.
Who were, who were some of the committee, what was the makeup of the committee?
We had teaching staff and classified staff.
Well, we'll look forward to getting those two calendars to look over again. Just suggest, if you do have any questions, get ahold of Mrs. Savage before the 11th of February.
Yep, and take them, and share them, and gather information and feedback. That was one of the things the staff was really wondering, too. What does the board feel about the calendars? What does the community feel about them? So we'll put both of them out for people to take a look at, but the committee's recommendation, again, we'll try to make that pretty clear, was calendar A or the traditional. It kind of mirrors what we're doing this year.
How many people were in the, on the committee?
About 14.
Equally divided, teacher and classified?
Not necessarily, no.
Do you anticipate that committee pretty much staying together?
Yes.
As you continue forward?
Yes, I gave them, I kind of gave them an option, and they were fully committed to continuing to meet and to put together a calendar, kind of already working on calendars for 2020, 21.
Do you think that their opposition to it was just because it was too soon or too new to them with your comment that they would like to keep it for one more year on the tradition?
The committee is 100% in favor, well, I shouldn't say 100%. The committee is overwhelmingly in favor of making a change. However, they want to be respectful of the other staff's opinion at this point, and they feel that the right move at this time is to provide more education and get more information, and that's why they want to stay together and continue to work on this.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. And we'll move on to the superintendent's recommendations then at this time.
Okay, we have a resolution authorizing the superintendent to enter into collective and individual agreements with Ohio colleges and universities on behalf of the board for terms related to the College Credit Plus program that will be implemented throughout Ohio during the 1920 school year. This authorization will, provided by this resolution, will remain in effect until withdrawn by formal action of the board. So I am excited to announce that we have a new College Credit Plus partner coming on board, and that is with Lord's in Sylvania. So that'll give students another opportunity. We would like to recommend that we set the 2019 high school summer school rates at $100 per course. We typically offer high school phys ed, high school health, and high school oral communications. I am recommending to the board that you approve the job description for our school psych assistant, and that is per the exhibit. That has been vetted by our job description consultant and by our school psychologists. So we're pleased to have you take a look at that, and I'll answer any questions based on those recommendations.
If there are no questions, I will accept a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
So moved.
Thanks, Tom.
Second.
Thanks, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, under commendations, this month is school board recognition month. So I'd like to take just a moment to read a little bit about it, and then we have some certificates. The Ohio School Boards Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month in January 2019 to build awareness and understanding of the vital function that an elected Board of Education plays in our society. School Board Recognition Month honors the members of Ohio's more than 700 city, exempted village, local, and joint vocational boards of education, and educational service centers' governing boards for their commitment to providing quality public education to Ohio school children. Bryan City School District is happy to join with other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contributions that you make to our community. You are elected to serve by local citizen, and you receive very little compensation for your time and efforts. You are dedicated, you are unselfish, you represent a continuing commitment to local citizen control and decision-making, and we want to thank you for the time and your years of service. So we have certificates for Scott Benedict, who's finishing up one year on the board. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Syndra is finishing year 11, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom, you are finishing year 23.
Yes.
Wow. On the board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Deb, you made it through year one.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Mike?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we really do appreciate everything that you do for us, and the support and the guidance, and we could not be where we are today without such a very well-functioning and positive board. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words.
And also like to commend, we had OMEA District 1 music selection. So you see our high school honors orchestra members, our junior high honors orchestra, high school and junior high honors band, and high school and junior high honors choir. Congratulations to all of those musicians. We have our middle school spelling bee winners, Drew Dauber, Karma Genter, and Candace Brandon. And our runners-up, Josie Zimmerman, Caleb Warner, and Tori Short. And all six will be competing in the Williams County school-wide spelling bee this Friday. Or did we miss it? Was it already over? Friday, the 11th?
Yeah, it's Friday.
It's Friday.
Oh, okay.
Last Friday.
All right, so the county one is the 28th. I need to keep reading. There we go. The county one is the 28th. So we wish those students the best. And then we also want to congratulate, Mr. Ruffer's not able to be with us, so we'll make sure we mention Maggie Voight broke the school record for the 200 free, and Kellen Rigg broke the school record for the 500 free in swimming. So congratulations to those students. And then PBIS rewards for Mrs. Good and Mrs. Tucker's classrooms, and then our gold slip winners for PE.
Nice list of musicians there, and swimmers, spelling champs.
It's an exciting month.
Very nice. We'll take a motion to accept Mrs. Savage's recommendations. No, commendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom? Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And then other, under personnel recommendations, we have the administrative compensation and benefit schedule. This was approved in July, and the only change to this is the addition of the school psych assistant position. So you will note that that was included in the same category as our school resource officers. That is the only change to that. Also, a new hire, Janice Gardner, preschool PM aide, one-on-one, four point two-five hours per day, Tuesday through Friday, effective January fourteenth, and that was to replace Jennifer's position at the preschool. One classified substitute this month. Also asking for the board to approve Mackenzie Luce, who is moving to the Masters plus twenty schedule effective January eighth. Diane Elsinger, math teacher with us, is going to be retiring at the end of the school year, effective June first of two thousand nineteen, and we congratulate her on a very outstanding career with Bryan City Schools. And I'm also requesting that the board approve an unpaid leave of absence for Sharon Jacobs as a bus driver, effective January fourteenth through May of two thousand nineteen. And I do want to note on this, Sharon is currently taking some coursework at Northwest State, which prohibits her from driving bus on a daily basis. However, we will be utilizing Sharon as a sub-bus driver on the days that she is not in class. So her unpaid leave of absence, just to clarify, is for her full-time bus route. She'll be filling in as she can and on an as-needed basis for the semester.
Good.
Questions?
If there aren't.
And then she would be paid at the sub-rate.
She would be paid at the sub-rate, correct.
Any other questions? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Syndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Under points of information, some upcoming meetings, we have the Business Advisory Committee, which will be February sixth at seven AM here at the boardroom. Our February board meeting will be February eleventh, as we set tonight, and LPDC is to be announced. I do have just a few updates legislatively. Right at the end of the year, they pass some bills that do impact education. I know that Mr. Rossworm was gracious enough to share those with you. But just a few highlights, and we've talked about them as an administrative team. The cursive handwriting, and Chad may touch on this a little bit or be open for questions. So they're going to bring back cursive writing and implement it into the ELA standards, but schools do not have to, we're not required to utilize the material. We talked that we feel it is something that should be brought back, but we're looking at what grade level. When, before, when it was a requirement, it was at second grade. We don't feel second grade is the most appropriate grade level, especially with the third-grade reading guarantee now in place, so we were looking more at four and five as some possibilities. So cursive handwriting is making a return. House Bill sixty-six, we, just so the board knows, we use an automated system for our attendance each day, so students that are not in school by eight-thirty in the morning, they, the secretary puts their name into a system. The system makes phone notifications, and those are completed well within the hour, or, I'm sorry, ninety minutes. It was amended, it is a hundred and twenty minutes. So we have two hours from the start of school to notify parents that their children are not there if they have not already been called in. We do that through an automated system. School bus drivers can now get their medical exams from chiropractors. There were some updates on assignments during student suspensions. Again, this is one that really does not impact us, is as a district, we have always allowed academic credit for work completed during suspensions. We have never penalized someone academically for their behavior. And then the graduation requirements, Mark might touch on that a little bit, but we're very happy that the class of nineteen and twenty have some new graduation requirements that are very similar to the class of two thousand eighteen, so we're very excited about that. And then House Bill five oh-two, another required in-service for all staff members on youth suicide prevention. Any questions or any that I did not highlight that you want to touch on?
On the notification one, Diana, does our system give us a feedback that that information has been received by the family or the number that it's gone to? Or is that not something that we're required to monitor?
We're not required to monitor as long as we can show that we've made the phone call.
Okay.
I don't know.
You can see whether it's aborted or rejected. If it is, I'll reject it, but again.
You don't.
Because the board's not there.
Okay, but we would, but that would be evident in our system to show that that in fact is what happened.
Correct. You can't necessarily show who answered or how long they may have given the call.
Right, but we can demonstrate receipt. Okay. Good.
Okay.
That is my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports from our administrators.
As I said, Mr. Ruffer had a conflict and was unable to be here, and Mrs. Cox must have had an emergency because I did not know of her absence, but you guys can coin flip or arm wrestle, whichever one you prefer.
Okay, Mr. Bassett.
Just a few things tonight. First of all, as we flip to February, we flip on this kind of the testing hat again. Some testing that arises then, first of all, the OLPA, the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment, we have a group of kids where English is not spoken primarily in the home, so we test them for English proficiency to show some progress. State ACT, mandated ACT test for all juniors will be at the end of February. Again, we'll test all juniors. We're doing it in a paper pencil format versus the online. We have a choice there. We choose to go paper pencil, seems to work out a little bit better for our kids. I think comes to ACT, I think they like having a paper pencil format versus the online computer that. And also the alternate assessment, we'll start testing our special ed population for special needs during the month of February. February fifteenth, in-service, just looking ahead a little bit there. Again, we'll do the last four modules of our E plus R equals O. Module with focus three, Spangler Candy is on board again to help train our staff, which has just been a great partnership to have people from outside our organization talking to our teachers, and then we want to continue that in the fall, hopefully teaching the E plus R equals O factor to our students and make this really a community project. And again, we're still on hold is us, our teachers training, Spangler Candy staff in this, which I think will be great for our staff being in front of their factory floor doing that. Cursive handwriting, like Mrs. Savage talked, be interesting to see what the state comes up with there and materials. We're kind of just on hold, waiting for that, for the materials to show up and get them in the teacher's hands. Last thing we're kind of in the middle of is administrative review, it's a comprehensive three-year food service audit. Go back three years and look at everything in the food service program, including wellness, our wellness policy. Part of that is a procurement policy, which is, as you guys know, pretty new federal law. So that would be kind of interesting to go through what they're going to review there when the law was just passed, not too many months ago, a year ago. So that'll be kind of a learning experience as we go through that procurement audit, so that'll be coming in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray.
All right, so as we speak right now, we're having the first of our, guys, let's take one question down. Having the first of our guidance nights, which were, when January hits, when the new year comes around, we start to schedule for our next school year. So our guidance counselors are informing our parents, our students of course availabilities for next school year, which is always, can be overwhelming, but we always take the fall of every current school year to analyze what's working, what needs to be, and what can we offer to continue to expand opportunities for our students. So I mentioned with you last month that one of the areas we're always continually focusing on, which is everything, but this one is being screamed at us loud and clear by our local businesses, is to provide training skills, hands-on manufacturing skills that would benefit employment within our community. So we've had an overwhelming support from some local businesses, specifically meetings have led us with Spangler Candy and True Fest right down the road here, and they are companies that over the course of the last few years have experienced the highs and lows of filling employment or open positions. So with them, we listened to them and what they were looking for so they could maybe help increase applicable employees to help the businesses. So with that, and that strong partnership has started to form, we also pulled in Northwest State Community College. And Jim Dravas is a employee out there who works with the workforce development curriculum, and together with businesses in Northwest State Community College, we have come up with a course offering that focuses on teaching students manufacturing skills. And the course is going to be called Industrial Technologies, and it's going to be offered for the nineteen twenty school year, and it's going to be offered in two sections. The fall semester is going to focus on some safety components, and, well, actually, well, I'm skipping ahead here, if you flip through your packet that I passed out to you, you'll see the first couple of pages have some oohs and ahs with some equipment that's utilized. It does require a lot of hands-on training, and this is something called a Skill Boss, in which the students are, from the instructor, are able to learn anything from pneumatics to robotics to electrical circuits. The list goes on and on what these machines can do. They're not cheap pieces of equipment, so they're very nice to get our hands on, and in our partnership with Northwest State, they're going to be able to provide these for us for our use for this course, so we're looking forward to that. If you flip the page, the end goal, if you go to the page that looks like this, the Certified Production Technician Certification, the end goal is through the offering of a course in the fall semester and the offering of a course in the spring semester, that a student will receive certification with their Certified Production Technician Certificate. So that requires more modules, which are outlined in its safety, quality practices and measurement, manufacturing processes, processes in production, and maintenance awareness. And each of those modules takes about forty hours to complete, so they're going to do two of the modules in the fall semester and two of the modules in the spring semester. And what's neat about this partnership that we formed is we are able to offer this course in a fashion that students can earn college credit, so CCP, so students from Bryan City Schools will take it just like they take any other college credit they take with Northwest State, or because sometimes we are running into scenarios where students who are not college-bound and have no interest in college, but they do want to be employable and gain employment skills, they can also take the course for non-college credit, or what's known as non-degree seeking. And sometimes we run into some situations, because at that point, the course is not funded by Bryan City Schools, where if they take it for college credit it is, where students may need some assistance with funding to get into a course like this. So Northwest State has a strong partnership with Job and Family Services, and they have a program component known as CCMVP, which stands for Comprehensive Care Management and the Employment Program. And what that does is it gives necessary supports to economically disadvantaged young adults ages fourteen to twenty-four. So we've been in discussions with them as well, and if we run into a situation where a student really wants to be in this course but cannot find the means to be in it, they will step up to the plate, and if they meet some certain criteria based on their economic status, will help fund the program for the student. So we are extremely excited about that, because that opens the door and avenues for all students, which is what our end goal is, to get them these skills. And again, we're just, we're really excited about this because the college credit is a perk, it's a bonus. We could potentially foresee, in talking with our guidance counselors, some of our students who even maybe have a mind for engineering or some hands-on robotic skills, maybe want to get in and get their hands dirty a little bit and seek what it's like to learn some training on this. Or you could have students who say, you know, I'm not college-bound, but I want to be employed, and I know there's some great opportunities right here in the community, how can I get a jumpstart on this? So we're looking to offer this to our upper levels for the high school, grades eleven and twelve, and then as they come to us, specific sophomores that may have interest in this as well, we don't want to turn them away. We also looked at this as an opportunity for them to seek, hey, is it right for me to now attend Ford County Career Center? It'd be a nice little stepping stone if they took it as a sophomore. Another area where this fits in with the graduation requirements that were brought up just a little bit ago, the state has expanded those alternative pathways for graduation, and this Certified Production Technician Certification fits in as an industry-recognized credential, so they can earn the necessary points towards their diploma via, or I guess separate from passing the state test if that's an avenue that they have not reached yet. So they do have to pass the test required for it, and they are pretty strenuous, but again, it's another optional opportunity for a student to meet the graduation requirements, which are, as we just mentioned, pretty strenuous nowadays. So we're really excited for this. We're unveiling this this week, or this month with our students. We know it's going to start small and hopefully pick up an interest from there, but we know that our specific business supporters are very happy about this. They can't wait to get some students that they have the ability to have an impact on as well. Because of the hour requirements of the forty hours for each module, we're offering this in a block fashion next year, meaning they're going to take it for back-to-back class periods. We're going to try and pair it and wrap it around in academic assist as well, so we may have some extra time throughout the year on top of meeting the requirements for these modules. So we're talking with the businesses on some type of Discovery Fridays or Fridays where the businesses can have a large part in dictating what the curriculum is, and they can come in and be guests in the classroom, they can bring in equipment if they choose to do so, or they can take them on visits and help them explore what's available out there and say, hey, here's what you're going to do in the classroom, here's how it works real life for us. So they're seeking some input on that as well. And one more little area where it just keeps getting better is because CCMVP provides funding, one of the areas that the businesses brought up to us is a concern for employment for them is the ability for students to be able to, or not students, employees to just be able to travel to work. So if they have found a student who is in need of acquiring their driver's ed training to get their license, CCMVP can recognize that, and if they're in this course, they're looking to also provide that as an opportunity for them to acquire their license or their license. So we've got a lot of good things happening with this, and I have to give credit where credit is due to our local businesses and Northwest State Community College. Jim Dravas has been outstanding, telling us, you know, we will make this work, although there's been lots of little hoops and bumps that we've discovered along the way. We're really excited to see where this goes, so we're hoping to fill this and then solve our next problem of who's going to instruct it. And that's, we have some names out there that are businesses. We'd like to see someone who's been in the manufacturing setting and can provide that background and skill set to the students, so there's some names floating around to help out with that as well.
And Mark, this will be for nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Nineteen twenty, so this coming August.
Okay.
Yep, so we're going to spend the spring months after we get the students in, starting to get them acquired with what their schedule's going to look like, start to figure out transportation, a lot of little bumps in the road, such as, yes, we have science classrooms and we have flexible learning, but the businesses are at times saying, you know, would it be okay to offer some classes outside of the school building? Maybe in a setting where they have a little more space and can get their hands a little dirty on some things, if we have some equipment that they can utilize? The answer is yes, that'd be great, because you can't, sometimes you can't bring in large pieces of equipment just because of mobility issues, so to take them there, we're talking about some of those discussions specifically as they get into the second semester, so.
When will you know, and how will you know about enrollment numbers? I mean, what if there's ten kids?
The magic number is to get to eight right now. And they are focusing on if, because it's a first-time offering, and there's going to be some, I don't want to say hiccups to work out, but just roll bumps that you've got to figure out when you're offering something this big for the first time. If we can get to a number of eight, that allows us sufficient instruction to happen on the machinery and the resources that you saw in some of those pictures, they don't almost have to.
I mean, what if there's 10 kids?
The magic number is to get to eight right now.
Okay.
And they are focusing on if, because it's a first-time offering and there's going to be some, I don't want to say hiccups to work out, but just roll bumps that you got to figure out when you're offering something this big for the first time. If we can get to a number of eight, that allows us sufficient instruction to happen on the machinery and the resources that you saw in some of those pictures. They'd almost have to cap it around 16, just because only so many kids can work on those resources at one time. So we're looking at the ballpark of eight to 16 right now.
Each year then.
And that happens in the enrollment period for them, signing up for classes for next year?
Yep, so we're, our guidance counselors are talking about that in classrooms. And then we have our high school guidance night coming up, I see, one week from tomorrow.
So they're hearing about this.
Yep.
Great.
What do you do if this goes real well and then the following year you have maybe 30 kids that want to do it?
So we brought up that good problem to have.
Yeah, yeah.
If that does happen, we've thought on two arenas. One, we might have to utilize some extra space and figure out how we instruct it. Because again, their ideal class size is about 16 max. So we'd have to look at adding a second class, which would involve a second instructor. But then also take that idea of using outside space for the tools and machinery and see where we go with that. And we also looked at, if a student completes it this year, do we have something that is offered in conjunction, again, with Northwest State that kind of follows this up? See this certification?
Sure.
Where do we go next? We always, we want to encourage students to attend Ford County Career Center because it's a vocational pathway and it can continue to carry out processes such as this. This all came about because we do see some students who don't attend Ford County Career Center or, like I said, maybe a sophomore who wants to start discovering what's available out there. And with the employment opportunities out there, if they're going to jumpstart on it, why not?
Sure.
So...
Absolutely.
Very, very good.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Have you done any exploration in terms of the level of interest on part of the student in the population as it exists right now?
That's what we're, that's what we're gathering right now as we speak. We spent the fall months kind of putting this together, making sure that this could become a reality.
So you have something to present to them.
Yes. Yep, yep. So that's where we get with our guidance team. And if necessary, what we're going to do, and we'll probably go down this road, is Northwest State's willing to host kind of a show and tell or a how-to night and bring in some of the equipment to showcase what this is. So as we generate that interest, we can bring the parents and students' families in and say, this is, this is what you're going to deal with, this is what it's going to look like. So that way, if they're on the fence, they get a little better idea.
Agreed, yeah.
So that'll be the first half of this semester. And then I think once we get things in place, we'll figure out all those other little incaibles that arise.
Exciting things.
So I...
Follow-up reports.
Yeah, so I want to echo what Mark said and, you know, thank Spangler and True Fast for continuing on this voyage with us. We kind of started these discussions almost two years ago and it's been a piece each time. And, you know, the partnership with Northwest State and Wedco. But a lot of credit goes to Mr. Rary for his dedication to taking that small idea and putting together what you see in front of you today. So thank you very much for all of your work.
You're welcome. And it takes, it takes a village. Like I said, I got to give credit where credit is due because there is an immense amount of support from our businesses, from the community, from key stakeholders in Northwest State to make something like this happen. So, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay. Then we do have a need to go into executive session for, A, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, Compensation of an Employer Investigation and Charges/Complaints Against Employee, Official, Licensee, or Student. And also, C, Conference with Board's Attorney to Discuss Managers or Subject of Pending or Eminent Court Action. We do not see any action being taken this evening at all. With that said, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Sandra.
Yes. Appreciate all those watching BMU in our school board meeting. We'll see you next month.